Twenty twenty-three, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Cutter.
President.
Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Clea McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Smolton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
As I mentioned, Mr. McDougal should be joining us in about ten minutes, so...
Okay. That timing should work out okay because we're going to go into executive session for potential litigation per RCW forty-two thirty point one one zero one I for thirty minutes where we will take no action. And in the meantime, if you're looking online for our minutes, we're working on that technical issue to try to get our meeting agenda back
Okay, council is back from executive session. No action was taken by council. And another announcement, we have been unable to restore the online access to the meeting, the packet materials. I know council has been emailed the packet materials. We're still working on that for any member of the public that might be trying to get on to see the packet materials. I am going to remove from the tonight's agenda item 8B, settlement agreement with Pacific Pile and Marine. So we'll remove that from the agenda, 8B. But I'm also going to replace item 8B with item 6C, which is Resolution 3107. So we'll move that from the consent agenda to other business. So item 6C becomes item 8B. So the announcements and committee reports, item for announcement from me, weather permitting, restoration work will commence the week of 23 January on the trestle. So pretty excited to hopefully start getting that restored. But weather permitting and lining everything up, I'd like to just thank Mr. Lunsford and the Parks Foundation for getting things rolling and being in a position where we're, again, weather permitting, we'll be out working on to restore that trestle. Other announcements and committee reports, item 4A, finance committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Let's see, on January 11th, we had a finance committee meeting there. It was Mr. Commissioner, I mean, Councilmember McDougall, myself, Keith Harris, and Mr. Hoggland. And we discussed the resolution, a possible resolution to change the banking services from Banner Bank to Savvy Bank and the benefits of that to the city. And we really went down deep and talked about, came down to the level of service. And so the decision was made, and I think there'll be an announcement and a discussion forthcoming about that. We talked about the benefits, they were vastly different, and so it's in the city's best interest to consider this additional bank. And so that'll be coming forward. And we also talked about the year and budget and actual figures, just to see how we were doing, where we are as a city, and how the departments are, you know, spending the resources. And so everything looked very good. We had a brief discussion about the CDBG funds, and we're going to have done, and I think Joanne are going to do some type of presentation to council about how they're used given retirements, I would assume. And just so that we are all as council are clear about how that can be done and how we might want to do it. And we also talked about the fire station update, Molly Lane. And we looked and reviewed the incomes, the costs, and it showed that it was a combined savings to the city of a lot of money, I think. And so it's a very positive thing. And so I'm sure that'll be coming forward out, and I'm sure Steve or you, Mayor, or someone will discuss that a little bit deeper about how much money we're actually saving the city, and it's a substantial amount, and, you know, I think it's a great thing. And the bottom line is, we ended the year 2022 in a really good position, particularly as we get ready to look at what may or may not come in 2023, the downturn that may or may not happen, and how do we approach that as a city from a fiscally conservative standpoint, but one of strength. Thank you.
Thank you. 4B, economic development committee. Mr. Young.
I'll go for it. At the economic development committee meeting, it was Mr. Meesimer, John Sternlicht from the Economic Development Alliance, and his staff and myself. There was a conflict of meeting for one of the other ones, but it was the three of us, and we had a great conversation. We talked about what's next in the agenda of things to accomplish to talk and think about economic development for the city of Anacortes, and how does that work within the county and all the other components and stakeholders for the various cities and organizations? And we also talked about what are the goals and timelines for achieving those things. And so part of the first phase of work will be some interviews. And we're categorizing that, that we thought that the members, the council members of the economic development committee could also attend, but what we're going to do is group various interests together. For example, just one interest could be the hospital, another interest could be small business and staffing requirements. And so part of that is a panel of interviews with stakeholders to find out what are their concerns, what are their successes, what are they hoping for, what's missing and what's not. And from that, we will form a larger committee to figure out how we go about those things strategically that may serve us as a city. So it's kind of the same approaches that used for the maritime strategic plan, and it worked out very good, and it informed the public what we were doing and what needed to happen, and everybody was informed in how we go forward from here.
Do you want to keep going and do the port city meeting?
If you suggest so. Mayor Miller, I will be happy to.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, sir. Port City had a meeting on the 10th. It was Port Director, Mr. Warra, Commissioner Bowers, Commissioner Petrits. It was myself, the mayor, Matt, Mr. Hatch. And we talked about a few things. I think the port, we talked about Mr. Verdoe resigning from his position at the port, and they had an opportunity to elect or appoint and then elect a new port commission on the agenda. The city talked, and the port talked, discussed the port's master plan for the North Basin development, and that it will be in phases. And Phase 1 may be the RV park, Phase 2 is infrastructural rebuilds and fills, and fill-ins. And the others is Phase 3 is any other other things that may come up later that they may deem necessary, such as buildings, restaurants, other things like that. But it was just a great opportunity for the city and the port to keep each other abreast of movement, but also to keep the communication going between the two entities and very relaxed. One of the things that was complimented was the ongoing conversations between council, members of council, and their sort of assigned friendship or person on the port. And those just allow a great communication between decision makers in each of those. Pier 2 stub wall, they talked about that, which is a wall, city-port agreement concerning stormwater and the processed water and the runoff and where it flows. And so part of that wall keeps the water from flowing somewhere they don't want it to be, but it also allows it to be contained, and so runoff is a big issue. The port continued to working on their tsunami planning and prep, and with other stakeholders, those are still big issues, given the environmental impacts that we're seeing from California and across the country. It's just, we're not sure of anything, so preparation is well underway, they're moving that forward. There's also was a discussion by the city, and I'm not sure, Mayor, how much I should say about this, as things are still sort of flushing its way out. But we were looking at, since the port itself and the transit shed will at some point no longer be a spot for locals or the city to have, or people to have events at. So there's a possibility of a temporary facility that the city may have as we're working to try to figure out, how is it cost effective, where the money comes from? And there are some ideas on the table, and they're great ideas. So there's some preliminary designs that'll be working their way through, there'll be a presentation for everyone to become aware of it, and then also to have some input into what it is. But it's an extraordinarily strong plan, and I think that it'll be something that we should consider. Good news is that the trestle is hoped to have that open by the spring. Mayor, I'm sure you're going to elaborate a little bit more on that at some point, but that's great news. People have stepped up, money's coming in, still a lot of work to do, but getting that work done to open the trestle back up is a huge victory for the city, and I think a wonderful beacon of what makes our city so special. During the high water mark, when we had the king tides, there was some damage at ship harbor, I mean, some washed out spots. And so all of those are being evaluated to decide what can be done, what should be done, if or anything, and how do we move forward in that whole process? So parks and rec, as well as the mayor's office and the teams of people working, including in that is, I would assume, the Samish. But everybody's at the table and trying to figure out, how do we move forward? How do we be environmentally friendly and responsible? And then how do we use the dollars that we have to the greatest good of our city? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. I'll let you take a breath, and just to note for the record that Mr. McDougall has joined the meeting. He was, he's already been here since we came back from executive session. Next is 4C, Skagit County Law and Justice, Law and Justice Council report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met last week, and we spent the first part of the meeting kind of brainstorming what the Law and Justice Council can do to better the county in regards to helping out behavioral health, alternative court types like community court, and also the homelessness. And we're just trying to come up with different ideas, different cities, what they're doing, what works, what doesn't work, so that we can kind of help each other out in that regards. We also received an update on the North Star project, and there's two phases to the North Star project, whereas Phase 1 is developing a shared vision, kind of between all the cities and the police departments, and the, just the shared vision and what we expect the program to be and where we want it to go. But the North Star project is in Phase 2, which is the implementation of the framework, including the different roles and resources, and where they're going to be coming from. And they're also working on a program called the Gelata Program, where they're taking, they're trying to put together where, if someone's encountered with law enforcement and social work, where they can tell them their story, their situation, and they can put it in a databank. And that way, the next time they're encountered, they don't have to reshare their story, it's already there, so that we can get services to them quicker, and they don't have to spend all that time going back through everything that they've already told the first person. Just having everything in one place that everyone can log into, so that everyone is aware of different services they've already received or need to, just streamlining the entire process. And that's about it.
Pretty excited about the Gelata Program. I always try to make sure I don't say gelato, but the Gelata, it's worked in a number of cities, and the county has contracted to bring that onboard. So we think it's going to be very helpful in that regard, helping to share resources. All right, next up is the 4D Public Works Committee, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM today, and it was Mr. Walters and myself and Public Works staff. We discussed four topics at length. The first was solid waste services, and we talked about the tote sizes for our garbage, our recycling, and our organic waste. And there have been some issues for some people with the size of those not being large enough. So some people have two 32-gallon containers, some people have one 21-gallon container. So talking about what makes the most sense going forward, do we add a 64-gallon container option? And what do we do with pricing? So that was just the initial conversation, and we will get into that further, because one of the goals of the city and most jurisdictions these days is to limit our garbage that goes to the landfill as much as possible, increase recycling, and there's a new organic, organic waste law that's happening right now. So anyway, how do we incentivize more recycling and more organic disposal to keep it out of the landfill, creating less methane, and, but the realities of what garbage is still going to be around? So anyway, that was number one. Number two, we talked about the Samish Early Learning Center inter-local agreement as they develop their, their new facility and the infrastructure improvements around there, the roads and the drainage and things like that, and how to make traffic flow smoothly, but not really fast in that area, and different traffic calming options. But the main gist is that inter-local agreement will be coming to council soon, and I had the, oh, next Monday. So we'll look at that, and the plans look great. It looks like it's very well thought out, the city's working on it, and then the city is very involved, but the tribe has funding to pay for it. So it's a great collaboration. The third thing we talked about was this really cool hydro excavator that we're looking at purchasing for the water department. It has been in the capital facilities plan for two years. It's coming forward soon. It's cost $550,000. We've been borrowing, we've been borrowing machines from other departments and from other jurisdictions. So basically, how this works, it's really cool. It's like a, it's a hydro excavator, so it's like a water pick with a vacuum, so it doesn't go in like a big clunky excavator or a backhoe, which can sometimes inadvertently destroy other utilities, and they have to dig a really big hole, and it's very cumbersome compared to this like really cool, precise instrument almost. And it can find utilities by drilling just a little, a small area, like inches instead of feet. And so then the repairs after they go in are far less big. So that's coming to council on February 6th, and if we order it soon, we will get it in the second quarter of 2024. And another conversation that was related to that is, when we have big expenses like this, how are they going to affect rates of the users? And so we need to be calculating those on an ongoing basis and make sure we're aware of how those, how those need to be addressed going forward. And then the fourth thing we talked about was an emergency declaration for a repair of a water leak at the water treatment plant, and staff is going to present on that one. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 4E, Anacortes Housing Authority Board appointment, and this is a report, and I am pleased to report to council of the reappointment of Susan Rooks to the Anacortes Housing Authority Board. Susan is, current term is expiring, the new five-year term is effective through December 31st, 2027. So five years on the board and agreed to do another term. So thank you. Next is 4F, Civil Service Commission appointment, and I am also pleased to report to council the appointment of- the appointment of Mike Ward, effective February 1st, 2023 through December 31st of 2026. Additionally, Mary Ann, and he will be appointed as an alternate Civil Service Commissioner. Mary Ann, additionally, Mary Ann Gutierrez will change from an alternate to regular Civil Service Commissioner effective through the end of her current term, 12/31/2024. And Mr. Ward's term will be through 2026. So again, there are three, three civil service commissioners and two alternate commissioners. So that's ENF. On to Item 4G, Historic Preservation Board Appointments. So I am, we'll start with the Historic Preservation Board as soon as I find that. So I'm pleased to present Kevin Harris for council confirmation to the Historic Preservation Board. This will be a three-year term effective through December 31st, 2025. So I'm asking for council confirmation. Mr. Young.
I move we approve the appointment as presented of Kevin Harris to the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay, motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. Carter to appoint Kevin Harris to the Historic Preservation Board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. On to Item 4H, Museum Advisory Board Appointments. So I am pleased to present to council the following reappointments to the Museum Advisory Board for council confirmation. Reappointment of Libby Walgamot, Judith Zerzin, and Dana Webb, all agreeing to new four-year terms on the Museum Advisory Board. So council, asking for your confirmation for these appointments.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of the appointments.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, second by Mr. Carter to approve the Museum Advisory Board reappointments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and I do appreciate the contributions of all our volunteers and their willingness to serve our community. These are unpaid positions and sometimes involve some, some good work, so thank you again for your willingness to serve. All right, we're moving on to, if I didn't miss any announcements or committee reports. Okay, moving on to Item Five, which is public comment. It's an opportunity for any member of the public to communicate to council on any item that is not, anything that's not on the agenda. And I'll look here in our audience now. Don't have anybody signed up, but there are a couple of folks here. But I do have a raised hand online, so we'll unmute you and please state your full name because all I see is Tom and where you live. You don't have to give me your address, but whether you're in Anacortes or not. So working on unmuting Tom. All right, well, the hand went down and, okay, maybe it was a mistaken hand. Well, welcome to listening into the meeting. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda items, and just a reminder, this is 6A and B only on our consent agenda.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I have one small correction to the minutes of January 9th. Under the HACs Committee notes, it mentioned that it was the Anacortes Family Center website with information about the housing initiatives in the coming year, but we also missed reference to the Community Action Recovery Navigator Program that was mentioned, that the information for that can be found on their website. So just wanted to call that out for anyone who potentially reads our minutes. And other than that, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'm wondering if Ms. Moulton could restate that correction to the minutes.
Sure. So where it says Ms. Moulton also pointed out the Anacortes Family Center website has good information on those items can be, what, okay, I'm doing it again.
This for the 9th, right?
This is for January 9th, and what can be added is that Ms. Moulton pointed out that the Community Action website has good information on the new Recovery Navigator Program.
Mr. Franciac, you got that? Okay. And, all right.
Second.
Okay, so I got a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Carter. Any additional discussion on the minutes and the approval of claims? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you for that correction, and we're happy to have Mr. Franciac back. Moving on to Item 7A, this is a public hearing, Resolution 3104, adopting the Housing Action Plan as a guiding document with recommendations for future housing policy, planning, and regulatory amendments to improve the availability and affordability of housing for the entire community. It's discussion with action item. Mr. Misimer, you will introduce this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience, Resolution 3104 adopts a housing action plan to improve the availability, affordability of housing for the entire community. The Housing Action Plan includes recommendations for future housing, policy, planning, and regulatory amendments. The plan was developed over the past year with stakeholder interviews, community survey, and existing conditions report, public meeting, and tonight's public hearing, of course. There are a few red lines, changes you'll notice to Resolution 3104 in your packet, which was revised today. The HACs Committee had a couple of changes on that, so those were made and remitted to the city council. With that, staff does recommend approval after the public hearing is closed, but I would like to introduce Scott Bonjukian and Bob Bingford with Makers Architecture and Urban Design. They really did all the heavy lifting on this, and so I'd really like to show our appreciation to them for that. So, Scott?
Thank you, Don, and council for having us for this presentation. I was just going to quickly, at a couple of, tonight, we have a couple of amendments to the Housing Action Plan that we put in after the last presentation, and we want to go over a little bit of some of the monitoring and implementation measures that we suggest. And I'm also mentioning, not with us tonight, but we also worked with Leland Consulting Group out of Portland, really helped to put together a lot of the data and some of the policy ideas behind the plan. So, see if I can switch the lines here. So just as a reminder, what the HAP, or Housing Action Plan, is, it's a policy document of data, goals, and strategies to promote safe and affordable housing options for all Anacortes residents and anyone else who wants to live here in the future. It includes recommendations and considerations on how to address housing challenges. Although you're adopting resolution tonight, it does not adopt any official policy changes yet. We kind of call it a pre-policy document, and it'll be up to you as the decision makers in the city and your staff to implement this through amendments to development regulations and zoning, comprehensive plan amendments, any city budgeting and investment decisions in the future, and other programmatic and opportunities to partner with other organizations. A HAP is a common document that a lot of other Washington cities are adopting or have been working on the last few years, since housing affordability and availability is a statewide issue. And I'll mention, this was also done with pretty good timing. After the 2019 code update, this kind of served as a check-in to see how that's, how that's working out. But we're also a few, a couple of years away from seeing Anacortes adopt a new or update a comprehensive plan in 2025, so this is a good kind of check-in period for the project. Just to quickly summarize the public outreach to dates that informed the plan, since we wanted to reflect the diverse inputs and perspectives of community members, we had a public kickoff at the Housing and Community Services Committee last February, so we're coming up on a year here. We hosted 15 stakeholder interviews with developers, general residents, employers in town, and others. We had over 1,000 survey responses in the summer, which is probably one of the most robust survey responses we've had on a project of this type, so we were very impressed with the community's interest responding both online and to a mailed version. We had a planning commission briefing in the fall, and of course, we briefed you last month, and we're here tonight at the adoption meeting. So with that, Bob, we'll go over some small updates that have been made since the last meeting.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Scott or Bob, just real quick, that last slide said that the survey was mailed to property owners. Did we not mail it to all addresses? Not, not to?
It was, went out in the utility mailers, so anyone who receives a utility bill in the city received it.
Okay, so that's a little from column A, a little from column B.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just some very simple changes made to the HAP since, since the last time we presented to you. Of course, a big part being the R2A zone, the biggest residential zone in the city. As we've talked about, there are a number of things that we've been trying to do, or suggestions to make it easier to do duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. But as far as the change, let's see, let me scroll down, you've seen these four options look at reducing the size of the lot that you need to be able to do a duplex or even a triplex, but we've added one more option, and that was to remove the specific minimum lot size provisions for duplexes and other multi-unit structures in favor of form-based provisions such as a maximum floor area ratio, or it might be a maximum building width, for instance. So just opening it up for additional options, as, as we know, there, there had been some interest from council and others on some additional options and flexibility there. So that's for the R3, or the R2A zone, and essentially, looking at something very similar for the R3 zone, there you can see in the blue, and again, the same thing, we had very similar four options to reduce the minimum lot sizes for duplexes and triplexes, and again, adding option five there, which would remove those minimum lot size provisions for duplexes and multi-unit structures in favor of some form-based provisions such as maximum building floor area or a maximum width of the facade. So, back to, back to Scott.
So I just wanted to touch on, as we sign off here, talking about implementation of the Housing Action Plan. Something we didn't get to last time, but this is in Section Six of the HAP document itself. So we've got a table in, oop, we've got a table in here showing, kind of keying to each of the policy or action numbers in the document, explaining if it's a high, medium, or low priority, suggesting who the lead department might be, who the staff would be to work with on that, our suggested timeframe consideration, thinking about kind of tying that to the priority and thinking a little bit based on our experience, how long it may take to go through some of this, whether it requires more analysis, or if you need to talk to other jurisdictions, or do more public engagement, that'll influence how much time it takes, and then the actual method. And so in the HAP, we have a list of priorities or high priorities that we suggest implementing in 2023. First is kind of a two-part approach to updating development regulations. One would be doing a development regulations update by April with some quick wins that we think are fairly straightforward changes, just based on what we've heard from stakeholders and seem like they would be fairly straightforward to do. And then kind of a second tier of development regulation updates by June, which might require a little bit more study or further engagement with the community. Next, we suggest implementing a multifamily tax exemption ordinance this year. Again, Anacortes is, would be the only city in Skagit County if it had this, and it's demonstrated across Washington to be one of the more powerful tools for attracting affordable housing. Third, we suggest hiring a housing coordinator, either on a temporary or a permanent basis, to help implement the Housing Action Plan and also to serve as kind of a community liaison on all issues related to housing production, connecting renters with tenant resources, attracting developers in town, and educating folks on what's possible. And we have provided a full job description of what that position would entail. And lastly, we also suggest a high priority is to implement some basic tenant protections beyond what state law framework allows, starting with some minimum basic options that get you the most bang for the buck, such as increased notice for rent increases, allowing folks to pay their move-in fees and installments and things like that. And lastly, the rest of the section mentions marketing the incentives and opportunities in Anacortes more, more aggressively, so things like creating a website to summarize the different housing options and incentives available in Anacortes, having more discussions with developers, notifying property owners that these options are available. Another long-term considerations are, of course, again, updating the comprehensive plan, particularly your land use and housing elements in 2025 to reconsider some things about, assumptions about the land use map and other policies, consider funding, some of the funding ideas in the HAP, and investigate potential surplus land sales in promotion of affordable housing. And then lastly, the last page of the document includes some suggested monitoring and target strategies, see how Anacortes does over the coming years in terms of promoting more housing production in general and affordable housing specifically. And so working with Leland, we developed some, some basic targets here to kind of compare how Anacortes is doing compared to the region or the state as a whole. And I won't go through all these, but just for example, is looking at how annual median home price increases are tracking in, in terms of compared to Skagit County and the state as a whole, and seeing if increased housing production is actually happening, and if it is, is that actually having a good effect on housing prices, which is the goal. Some basic targets and ranges for actual raw numbers of new housing units to produce per year based on your need for population growth and diversity of housing, and some basic provisions for a number of affordable housing units and to develop per year. So with that, thanks for having us work on the project, and it was great to work with Don and the HACs Committee on this, and hopefully we'll keep in touch to see how things go with implementation.
Okay, so maybe before I open it up for council, this is a public hearing, and I'd like to offer any members of the public an opportunity to comment, and then we can close the public hearing. I will check you now. Okay, I've got, now I've got Beth and Pearls with a hand up, and if you, we will unmute you, and hopefully it'll work this time, but you'll need to state your name and where you live. But maybe we're getting random hands coming up on the Zoom. Okay, all right, well, with no one here commenting, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open up for council discussion. Mr. Walters.
I had a quick question again for our consultants from Makers. What quick wins have you identified that we could pursue in the next two months before the April?
I don't have a printout of the full document in front of me, but it was minor tweaks around things like, for example, cottage housing, you can build attached duplex cottages in only certain zones. We suggest just allowing that in all zones where it's possible. Let's see if I can pull that up here.
Multifamily tax exemption?
I wouldn't consider that necessarily a quick win, since that's probably going to take a little bit of time to think through, but certainly we think it'd be possible to do this year.
There is a state law that provides an April deadline for Growth Board appeal protections, and I'm wondering if you've identified measures that would fit that statute? And, and if so, we don't have to hear them now, if you've got them elsewhere, but I'm interested in that list.
Yeah, Don gave me the list here. So a couple other things I think could fall under that because they all have to do with development regulations, and that would be protected by that protection include updates to the lot sizes and some of the residential zones that Bob alluded to, adjusting some provisions for where single-family uses are allowed in your medium and high-density zones, adjustments to front yard setbacks, making some minor adjustments to the R4 height bonus program, and some other kind of miscellaneous housekeeping definitions and design standards updates, make things a little bit more predictable for implementing private development.
So, Mr. Misimer, are you thinking that we would actually pursue that? Because with a 60-day notice to commerce, your time is short.
So, thank you, Mr. Walters. I'll be working, I'll be working with Scott and Bob over the next few weeks to identify very clearly which ones we can move forward with more quickly.
which ones we can move forward with more quickly.
You only have two weeks.
And I'm thinking that...
I'm sorry? You only have two weeks, though, plus 60-day notice to achieve it by April 1.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're going to meet that deadline, but we'll...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if not, I would advocate moving quickly, but not artificially fast.
Yeah. When we think about the process, there's quite a bit of process even to go through, you know, getting before the planning commission, coming back before city council, public meetings. So...
I know, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I guess I also want to point out again that, as we've articulated in the resolution, we're adopting the plan by the text of the resolution. We're adopting the plan, but we're not necessarily guaranteeing we're going to move all of these measures forward. Some of them, you know, have a variety of options. Some of them, we may not want to move forward upon further study. But the plan itself is valuable just for the ideas and the concepts that are in it, and the pieces that we will want to move forward, plus the existing conditions reports. If people haven't read those associated documents that are on the webpage that is associated with this plan, is really valuable just by itself, just to demonstrate the condition that our housing market is in and the need that we have for additional housing in Anacortes. Kudos to our consultants for doing this work. You really, I guess, are knocking these out for jurisdictions now, because you put this together, I think, really quite quickly, and it's really valuable and excellent work for us.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Yes, I want to echo Councilmember Walters. Thank you for all your great work, and it also is very timely with what's happening at the state level. For example, the grant that the city received from the Department of Commerce is how the city paid for the work of the consultants in our Housing Action Plan. And Councilmembers Walters and Cleland McGrath and I were at a housing consortium meeting today at the Skagit County level in learning about different legislation, and there is so much in the works right now in the Senate and the House and at the governor's office. And there's a really big commitment right now by legislators, because it's an emergency all over the state. So we're not really, truly working on this alone. There's a lot going on and a lot coming forward that we'll be following with interest that relates very much to our Housing Action Plan. And the last thing I'd like to add is thank you for the late inclusion of option number five. I've been learning a little bit more about missing middle housing, and so much of it is form-based rather than density-based, with height, width, and depth, and how units can be fit onto parcels so well and blend so harmoniously with their surroundings that you kind of need to look for meters and mailboxes to even know that they're multifamily. There are some that just look like pretty good-sized houses. So I think that we have some exciting opportunities to pursue that way, so I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Ms. Cleland.
Thank you. As the third member of the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee, but also the same committee as the Planning Committee, so we've spent a lot of time with Makers and staff on this. So thank you, and I appreciate our over 1,000 responses. That's really amazing. I think that the raw data that's available in this report is incredibly important. It kind of gives context and perspective for our development regulations. You know, we've got our, we had our, we completed our kind of long-term strategic plan, but that's something that's kind of, it feels good. This is a lot more meat. And to be able to have this kind of document available for us, but also for the public to kind of have that context, and have a place that has all of the options available. I think it's really important, we did get some feedback, that there's some concerns that somehow this is all getting stamped and going to be put in our code immediately. That isn't the case, but I think it's important that the public can look at all of the options now, and then we can have discussions moving forward over the next four, six, 18 months. So thank you for this work. I think this is a really important document, and thank you for, Councilmember Walters, for, I think, coming across this grant. So it was well-covered, and getting it done in under a year is pretty amazing. So, well done. What are we, Planning Department? So that's all I have to say.
Any other questions, comments? Well, there is a resolution as part of this. Miller? Mr. Walters?
So we proposed just a couple of changes to the resolution. One was to shorten the title, because it had just some extra words in it. Another was to strike. There's a phrase or sentence in there about expanding the market rate, single-family housing market. That's really not our focus. Single-family market-rate housing seems to be doing just fine all by itself. So we think that that strengthens the resolution a little bit.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
I move approval of the resolution adopting the Housing Action Plan.
Second?
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton to adopt Resolution 3104, adopting the Housing Action Plan. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Makers. Thanks for all the great work. Appreciate it. All right, we are moving on to other business, item 8A. It's an agreement with the Anacortes Family Center on Alternative Response Team. This is a discussion item with possible action. Chief Harris, you know I can't read that that much longer before you get up here and present. There you go. Thanks, chief.
Good hustle. It's on, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
A little bit closer to the mic, sorry.
Okay. So last year, we received a grant for $40,000 from the Association of Washington Cities to help us develop an alternative response team. The model we chose is a coresponder team, which will be a partnership between the AFD Community Paramedic, APD, and the Anacortes Family Center. The AFC is going to provide a contracted social outreach worker for approximately 20 hours per week, and a mental health provider for approximately seven and a half hours per week, and the grant will pay for these services from now until June 30th. The team's an enhancement of our current programs. The purpose is to connect our citizens in need with the services they require, and they may include housing, mental health, medical, or substance abuse programs. Tonight, I brought Steve Monrad with us, our community paramedic, in case there's some detailed questions. But if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for bringing our community paramedic. I know that's a program started from scratch and built it into a really effective tool, and this addition to that will even make it more effective. But with that, council, questions for either of these folks? Mr. Walters?
The term of the proposed agreement is through June 30th. Is that a limitation in the grant that's funding this program?
Yes. Everything we have to build, the state has to be, or the Association of Washington Cities by June 30th.
Okay. I've asked this before, and I wonder if we've figured it out. Do we know why the Association of Washington Cities is involved in this?
The way I understood it, it was simply a way to pass it through from the legislature. They kind of explained it in the very beginning. It just became, it only wanted to go to cities. It couldn't go to other types of jurisdictions, which I think is why they chose the AWC, but it wasn't explained well.
Okay. So the money ends at six months. My sense is that we've done a pretty good job at starting the community paramedic program, what is it, a year and a half ago now, at grabbing this bit of money, at grabbing a bit of money that we fund the family center's contract to work with the police department. But at some point, we are going to need to get more intentional about what, articulating exactly what our needs are, and then figuring out how to fund it, rather than finding little pots of money and then using whatever money we can scrap together. So I'm hoping that during the six months, we will be able to gather data, gather thoughts and impressions about what our needs are, so that you can then tell us that during the budget process for 2024, so that we can think about and budget for fulfilling those needs, you know? So if you find that, you know, we've got six months of a mental health professional at however many hours per week that we've got that mental health professional, seven and a half hours per week during this term, if we find that we need him 15 or 30, you know, or a street outreach social worker for only 10 or for 40, you know, I would really appreciate hearing that, what that need is, and then we can figure out what it is we can do to fund those positions. And then also, under this contract, we are contracting with the family center to then contract with a mental health professional. It may be that we should rejigger some of those relationships in the future if we go to a 40-hour-a-week mental health professional, or 20. So I want to leave those doors open. But this is just a great opportunity for us, at basically no cost to us, because it's funded mostly by the grant, to figure this out and to get our feet wet with this and learn. So I'm hoping that you will report to us at the end of this, so we are better informed about what we should do moving forward.
Certainly, and that's a major goal of this program, is for, to find out how effective having, I would say full-time, but a dedicated social worker, the on-call mental health professional, to really see the impact they can have. That's one of the first things that Steve and the team have been tasked with, is to develop some measurable metrics to help you determine whether or not, or help us decide whether or not this is something we want to fund long-term.
And if I could continue? And my sense is, we don't really have those metrics with the existing AFC contract that's run through the police department. So I don't know what they look like, but it will take some hard work to figure those out. And differentiating between the social worker and the mental health professional, I think, will be key as well. Because another one of my senses, you know, devoid of data or evidence for it, is that we run into bottlenecks with service provision on the back end. So you've got a social worker, and you can connect people to services, but if those services don't exist, then we're going to run into problems, and there's no amount of social workers you can throw at a problem if there's no resources behind it. So I'm interested in that aspect of it as well.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I think Mr. Walters, in his second phase of questions and things that he was looking to see, captured exactly what I was looking for. Quite honestly, you know, this is all about being data-driven, such that we're clear as to what we are attempting to address. We've delineated from the various aspects of the calls that may come in, the needs that are out there, and we quantify. It's just simply is what it is. And if we really want to do the help that we're doing, and really help the community, as much as you hear from the various committees, the efforts by the city to do its due diligence to the public, to be as transparent as possible, those are the numbers that I'll be looking for, because, you know, I'm very much a supporter of what we're doing. But I just want to be able to quantify it, talk about it, show those numbers clear that those dollars are being effectively used, as it could be and should be. And as, you know, was said, whether or not we need to rejuggle how this is done, you know, protocols for what we want done, I think we can define that. And I think that, you know, being responsible as we are to the public for what we're doing, you know, what we're attempting to do to reach those people that need us the most, I say that, you know, bring all things to the table, and we will deal with it as a city in effectively, effective use of our dollars. And so I think this is a wonderful program, I really do. I just want us to be able to quantify that, such that the public knows how many people we're seeing, what we're seeing them for, how it's being allocated. And then as decision-makers, it'll help us determine whether we need more, less, or even however we need to go from that. But that is the due diligence that I'm looking to bring forward as we bring this, you know, back to council and those numbers. So thank you.
I think the great news is, Mr. Monrad's the perfect person to do that, as somebody who's just created a program from scratch into the community paramedic program a year and a half, so knowing what the data that we expect, that you all expect, to get to continue the, you know, the viability and what the gaps are, so I think we're good. Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to reiterate, from the time, over the last couple of years of HACs committee meetings and trying to do research about outreach on the street versus getting resources and the lack of resources and availability, I guess I just want to stress that, yes, I want the data, but I also would like to see a report, your explanation or thoughts on the challenges, right? Where we're seeing failure, not just at our level, but when you try to pass, to transfer those folks who need additional resources, where those disconnects are happening, because that's really important for us to know when we go and talk to the county, or when we go and talk at the state level, hey, here's where, you know, we can pass them off, it's great to have someone on the street, but there's nowhere for them to go and refer to. So, yes, the data, but also I think some of that higher-level, almost like research paperwork that needs to be done, which I know you've had to do so far, but don't hesitate to do that. And from our conversations on the Public Safety Committee, it seems like maybe that was part of the goal of doing that six-month funding. I don't know how much we're going to really have solutions, right? Because six months isn't that much time. But let's try to identify as many problems as we can, so we can convey that to other entities.
Certainly. And one of the, kind of those problems that have, that's come up already between Steve's program and the social worker that's already being contracted with, is, and the new social worker is being called the Social Navigator, which I didn't fully understand until I was talking to the AFC folks. And it's part, so the services exist, a lot of services exist, but sometimes the folks that need them don't have the capacity to navigate the system. And having this kind of full-time social worker, one of her jobs is going to be to maybe sit with that person, help them fill out paperwork, help them get through, we can help transport them to these meetings and things like that. So that's already been a problem identified, and that's one of the things we're trying to solve now.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I think you're absolutely spot-on on that. You know, quite honestly, I think it was two years ago I met this homeless gentleman at an event here, and he and I have stayed in contact with one another. He goes from Alaska to Arizona to wherever, but he's moving. And, you know, and part of that is each of those places, you know, as I try to encourage him, you know, to stay focused, opportunities that are there, when he's presented with opportunities, sometimes the opportunity that's presenting itself requires follow-up later on. And then, given all the other things that's happening in their life, whether or not phone service, he may or may not have it, like so many others, I think that having someone to help them and help shepherd that process, because it really would be of tremendous help to have that part of it in place, too, because I think that you would pick up more people willing to move forward. Sometimes, you know, people are so beaten in the process that they've kind of lost that will to follow up. You know, it's a whole bunch of reasons. I'm not trying to oversimplify it, but I think that that tool would be a very useful tool, and that I would be very much in support of that. Thank you.
Miller? Mr. Walters?
Maybe a couple other follow-ups on the details of the agreement. The proposal here is that you'll obtain a mental health professional for up to seven and a half hours per week, but also a street outreach social worker, assumedly a different person.
Yes.
For up to 20 hours per week. Those terms aren't defined here. What qualifications do you think you'll be obtaining for the mental health professional and for the social worker?
So the mental health professional is a master's-level mental health professional, and that's, honestly, that was the recommendation of Dustin Johnson from the AFC. I don't know the details of just exactly what that means. I do know there is not the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the DCR capability, that is not part of this program.
No, no. We wouldn't get our own DCR, although I would note that DCRs can perform their function via video. And if, we can't obtain a DCR here in Anacortes, we should get them on a Snapchat or whatever, you know, to be able to perform their function. We should explore that. But the designated crisis responder who's able to detain somebody for up to 72 hours for evaluation and treatment, or ultimately for evaluation and treatment for mental health, behavioral health problems. So how do you envision this working? Can you provide maybe a little bit more detail on what you're going to use, the seven-and-a-half-hour mental health... mental health professional for and the 20-hour social worker for?
Yeah, so...
And, sorry, and one related follow-up. Does the social worker have MSW?
Have what?
No. Okay.
Well, there's a lot of this that, I heard the expression the other day, that we're designing the airplane as we fly it.
Sure.
So there's a lot of this. This was a really quick period for this grant, so we're kind of putting this together quite quickly. And a little bit of background, I think a lot of what AWC was looking for here is they wanted to get basically a count of crisis beds throughout the state. And so essentially, they were asking the cities to do that work, because that was a number that they really didn't know, was the availability of crisis beds throughout the state. So that's kind of where a lot of this grant came up. This grant is going to be renewed next year. We haven't quite heard the details on whether we need to reapply or why. We don't know. But back to your question, kind of the vision now is the outreach social worker's probably going to primarily be partnered with me three days a week. She is ready to do whatever we need to do. She's a student currently, counseling student with substance abuse disorder treatment experience. That's what she's going to school for. She's worked as a recovery navigator and worked as a navigator in other settings. So she's excited to come work with us, and she's interested in basically any of the experience that she can help us with. A lot of the folks I deal with, of course, are elderly folks with health issues, and she's, you know, willing and interested to, you know, get involved with that and learn that area of social work. So she's going to be with me three days a week. We don't have the schedule totally pinned down, but probably Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. She'll also be able to respond to some calls, because I do respond to 911 calls for, to help out, and she'll be available to respond for those. She's got skills in de-escalation and all that, all that good stuff. So. The mental health professional, again, we're still ironing out the details of quite how that's going to work out. We're not sure if that individual's actually going to come out in the field with us, or if we're going to be more doing a referral for session work or what. So there's some of that stuff we're just going to have to figure out as we go. And I'm excited to see where we can take this. Really, you know, when we began this, a lot of my vision for where this program would go would be to have some sort of social worker working along with me. And so I'm excited to see where this goes.
Thank you.
Ms. Moulton, I think.
Yep, thank you. So just to clarify for people at home, that this is an additional, brand-new, two new positions, which is great to increase our capacity that way. And I was just wondering if AWC, or whatever, whoever's funding it through AWC, has reporting requirements or expectations from this program?
We do have reported requirements for AWC. I just saw them the other day, and they're pretty, it's pretty simple. I don't think it's going to be a problem. No, honestly, the recording requirements are extremely minimal. But I think our intent is, so Steve's created a pretty good report just for the community paramedic program, and I think we want to take that and to create, again, additional reports to educate council and the city on where we're going in the future, yeah. And a kind of a related note to answer some of Mr. Walters' concerns earlier, I believe this will be a successful program. I think we'll demonstrate a need for it, and I think it's going to make an impact over the next six months, and we're probably going to want to look for ways to continue it. We are looking, as Steve mentioned, there, we don't know the details yet. This grant may be extended or extendable. We're also looking at some partnerships with the North Sound ACH. They have some very similar programs that they're willing to fund, and sort of similar to the old Safer Grants, where they would pay for a whole year and then three-quarters of a year and a half year of employees. So Steve's meeting with them a little bit tomorrow. I have a formal meeting with them next week to see where that may go as well, so.
Can you just say what the acronym ACH is? Because I'm mixing them up with something else, I think.
You know, I've learned so many acronyms this last year and a half. North Sound Accountable Community of, Accountable Community of Health. The state is broken down into, I forget how many different ACHs, and they're kind of regional organizations that, they have Medicaid dollars, and their mission is to promote healthcare to underserved populations. And we've partnered with the ACH when we started this program, and we do get a little bit of funding through them.
And we went after the grant because it seemed like it would help. Yes, we don't probably have all of the, all of the details that council usually likes to have, but, you know, I envision it, you know, Steve's going to go out with this person, and if there needs to be a higher level of service, then you go to the seven-and-a-half, you know, the seven-and-a-half hours as you work your, work your way through it. So again, looking for some council support on this one, because we'll need to move forward with the contract. Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah. I would just like to abstain, because I am currently on the board for the family center.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I recommend we authorize you to execute the contract between the City of Anacortis and the AFC to provide funding for an alternative response team.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Young to approve the agreement with the Anacortis Family Center on the Alternate Response Team. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Abstain.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. And we have one more item. If you recall, we moved item from the consent agenda. This is resolution, this will be item 8B, Resolution 3107, declaring an emergency and waiving state competitive bidding requirements for the repair of the 36-inch water transmission pipeline. So, Mr. McDaniel, you're going to come up here and give a brief synopsis, and then council will determine.
Good evening, Mayor and council, members of the public. Brian McDaniel, City of Anacortis Water System Manager. Quick background on the ask for the foregoing the waiving the competitive bids. January 11th, last Wednesday, about 11:40 in the morning, the water treatment plant had a pressure spike where we had a failure of a transmission main, a 36-inch pipe, where actually a gasket blew out of the pipe. So we need to work very quickly to get this repaired, and by passing this resolution, it'll let us do that as quickly as possible. There is, water still continues to flow. The infrastructure that's in place is redundant. This is just to repair the redundant supply. So if you have any questions, are there questions?
Any questions for Mr. McDaniel?
Mr. Walters?
On each of these, I always ask what the magnitude of the potential expense is, and as we heard, we don't know, but we may be talking, maybe, up to $1 million.
Yeah, the, we like to call that the rough, rough order of magnitude in talking about the absolute furthest extremes. With this resolution, what this allows us to do is to break off pieces of that contracting, to evaluate exactly what needs to be repaired, make the best use of the materials that are available to us to make a permanent repair on it. So that's the, is the extreme. So thank you for the question.
It's a reminder of the importance of having redundant systems, but we need to make sure they're both up and operating. Any further questions, motions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I move approval of Resolution 3107.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve Resolution 3107. Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Being no further business before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night.